Mr. Page.
I moved at the board's certified by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Ms. Offord?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Earl Hero?
Yes.
The motion passes, and I call to order this school board meeting for February 13, 2020. First, may we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And may we now take a moment of silence, please. Before we get started, may we do a microphone check for the people at home. Mr. Holden?
Ross Holden, School Board Attorney.
Judy Lee, Rivanna District.
Kate Acuff, Jack Chewitt District.
Katrina Carlson, Rio District.
Graham Page, Miller District.
Jono Alcarro, at large.
David Oberg, Whitehall.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Matt Hawes, Superintendent.
Debbie Collins, Deputy Superintendent.
Lloyd Hairston, Assistant Superintendent.
Sarah Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent.
Rosalyn Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer.
Thank you, everybody. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the agenda and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. May I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Open for any discussion or points?
Question on one item from Section 3.4 of the consent agenda with printers for Henley and Sutherland. How does, how do all the schools stack up compared to Henley and Sutherland for printers at the school? Do they all have those items?
Yes, this, this grant, this money would be, would be spent to get everybody up to the same. the same place with 3D printers.
Okay. All right. Okay, any further discussion?
I would just like to take a note, make note on section, item 3-6, the donations and reimbursements to the school division for the second quarter. I'd like to thank everybody in the community who made donations to our schools, and a special thanks to the donor who made a contribution to cover the Albemarle County Student School Meal Hardship Fund. It's in its entirety, something we all appreciate.
So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes. The next area of business is the spotlight on education. Before I pass this to Mr. Ober, after the spotlight starts, all of us have been requested to go and sit in, down in the seats in the first row so that we can watch what's going on and not be behind the students. Mr. Ober.
They were afraid I'd do bunny ears. Where did they go? There they are! That's why it was further away. It was the poet Henry Wadsworth Longfellow who first stated that music was the universal language of mankind. Just this past year, scientists at Harvard published the most comprehensive study ever done on the subject, and they agreed. An article in Psychology Today a few years ago said, "With music, you can reach across cultural and linguistic boundaries in ways you cannot with ordinary languages such as English or French," although we're going to test at least the French part this evening. That's because we are going to conduct our own research with the help, and you guys can applaud when this happens, with the help of some incredibly talented musicians from Merriweather Lewis Elementary School. I like the school's mission statement that is, seeks, that is, seeks to inspire and develop a community of critical and creative thinkers, responsible global citizens, and lifelong learners. I like even more how the school's music program is bringing the school's mission to life, beginning with kindergarten students. Under the direction of Cheryl Wetmore Simpson, Merriweather Lewis students are using music to bring joy and reverence into our communities. Ms. Wetmore Simpson says students are never too young to learn about community service, and she proves it by scheduling student performances in senior citizen communities, by partnering with the Salvation Army, and by honoring our veterans, all with musical tributes. This evening, on the occasion of the school board appreciation month, we are privileged that many of the students are here on our behalf, and guys, we're psyched because this is super cool. I also want to acknowledge Merriweather's Assistant Principal, Leslie Wills, who is in the audience. There she is, and I think she's holding a future musician. Thank you, Leslie, for joining us. I'd like to ask Cheryl, who herself, by the way, is the daughter of a former school board chair, to introduce our special guests.
Should we go down?
Can I speak with you first?
Oh, okay. Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, and then I'll call the children down. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and ladies and gentlemen of the school board. Thank you for inviting me here this evening to speak with you about our music program at Merriweather Lewis. I've been a teacher there for nearly 20 years, and although this is only the third year that I've been the music teacher in the school, I learned early on in my teaching career how important the arts are in the lives of our students, and I've appreciated the board's commitment and support in this area. Arts programming allows students of all backgrounds to have the opportunity to gain greater self-confidence, develop pattern recognition, and explore their individual talents. As teachers, we know that music and art helps our students become more comfortable with risk-taking. It requires a deeper dive into teamwork and cooperation with the classmates. It builds imagination, discipline, and spatial intelligence. Music and art also encourages creative thinking and the development of problem-solving strategies that spill into the academic arena and boost their achievement. I feel very fortunate to have a fabulous arts team to collaborate with at Merriweather Lewis, including our art teacher, Ms. Drol Shagan, who's here this evening, and our French teacher, Madame Braun. We teach and plan together in an effort to provide engaging and rigorous learning opportunities because we want to inspire our young learners to reach further into their learning and find what they are truly passionate about. For many students, music and art is the pathway that opens doors to success in later academic careers. I'm here with my students tonight to thank you for supporting music and art programming in our schools. I understand that February is school board appreciation month, and as the daughter of a father who spent seven years as a school board member, I know the commitment it takes and the long hours you put into your work. I thank each of you for your service to our community. I was raised, you see, to believe that community service is important for all of us, no matter how young or old we are. Each of us have something of value to share with others. Our youngest students in the division have the opportunity to make a difference in our community as well. Last year, with the support of my Merriweather colleagues, I implemented a community service program connected directly with our music that ties them with their curriculum. We're continuing that program again this year at Merriweather. I believe that volunteering in the community is a gift to the neighbors we serve, and it also helps our elementary students build empathy and begin to understand the value of reaching out to others while at the same time developing stronger communication and leadership skills. So far, our students have had the opportunity to partner with several local nonprofits, and we're always seeking new avenues for service, so if any of you have any ideas of what we should do next, go ahead and tell us, or administration, let me know. Our kindergarten classes visited with and sang for seniors at the Laurel's. Our first graders recently worked with Mr. Antonio Rice at the Salvation Army to collect shoes for those in need, and by the way, they had a great time practicing counting by twos with me, and every day, we came up with a different number of shoes, but we finally got to 832, and they did a great job with that, with getting them all together, even estimating. Our third graders performed for the local veterans in November, and our fourth graders are getting ready to launch a partnership with the Service Dogs of Virginia. These service projects are led totally by our students, and I can't tell you how fabulous it is to see first graders speaking on the video announcements to our whole school about the project that they're involved in with a little help from their fifth grade buddies, right? There's so much learning that goes on with this community service program, and I'm grateful for the teachers in our building who are willing to support this initiative, often outside of their regular working hours into the evenings. This evening, I brought members of both the kindergarten class and the second grade class to sing for you. They're here with their parents also, and because the board also funded a FLESS program at our school, our primary students are not only learning French in the classroom, but they're studying French music as well. I'm going to invite our students to come down now, and I hope you'll feel free to sing along in English or French, if you know French. It's Valentine's Day tomorrow, and we thought we could share a couple songs that you might enjoy as a thank you for everything you're doing to keep the arts alive in our school division. Thank you again for inviting me to share tonight. Please stop by Merriweather anytime. You are invited to see what the children are doing in music and art and French. I can tell you that the children and myself, we will all be happy to see you. Thank you.
Thank you for inviting us to come to sing for you tonight. We wish you a happy school board month and a Valentine's Day! It's a French goodbye song that we learned in French class.
Oh, she's way over there. Okay.
There we go.
That'll be a hard spotlight to beat.
I know.
Absolutely.
I was surprised Ober didn't start singing.
No, he was.
He was.
I was absolutely singing.
Oh, yeah?
But singing out louder.
My French was strained at this, but I could make it out a little better.
That was absolutely wonderful, and I want to thank everybody who brought, from the children from Merriweather Lewis and the teachers, and the parents, for that wonderful, wonderful time that touched all of our hearts. And so, since I really don't want to have to follow that, Dr. Hawes, do you hear any announcements?
Dr. Kaiser?
Thank you. I just wanted to share that two Saturdays ago, the Human Resources Department held our first-in-a-while local job fair. This was held at K-Tech and was a combined effort between the schools and local government. Approximately 85 people attended, most of whom were teachers, so we were very excited about that. We were delighted to talk to this very diverse group of prospective employees and have already seen a number of them apply for positions with us since that day. We had several principals and assistant principals volunteer their time to meet with and interview prospective teacher candidates, and I would like to especially thank Dr. Daphne Kaiser and Mr. John McQuilkin in Human Resources, as well as the other staff who helped coordinate these events.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
No, sir.
Okay. Any announcements from the school board? Our next order of business is public comment. Mr. Page?
All right. Good afternoon or evening. We invite and actively seek the public input in the matters relevant to school board governance and provide for time in our meetings to hear from our residents and community members. Respectful and on-topic comments are expected during public comment. Willful dissection of the meeting will not be allowed. Speakers should adhere to the following protocol. At the speaker's podium, please state your name and address or voting district. Please give any written statements or other supporting materials to the clerk for distribution. Please note that written statements are made a part of the permitted records of the school board. Three minutes will be allowed for each presenter to speak. A color-coded light system will be used to time presentations. The yellow light means that the speaker is two minutes into the presentation, and the red light means the speaker is at the three-minute limit of the presentation and must wrap up promptly. In order to maintain respect of all points of view, the school board requests no clapping, booing, or any other forms of support or non-support be used. If members of the public wish to show their support to a speaker, they may stand or raise their hands. Our first three speakers tonight are Mrs. Amy Gartner, Cheryl Knight, and Vernon Lecty. Mrs. Gartner.
Mrs. Gartner, before you start, how is your son?
He's fine.
He's better?
Well, he's a little bit stressed.
Okay.
You want to move the mic? Turn the mic around. Too close, can you hear? Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Amy Gartner. I'm a citizen of Albemarle County, and I live in the Whitehall District. I took public speaking at PVCC between my sophomore and junior year of college to avoid speaking in front of a large group. I have stood as past presidents, spoke before the board, and thought that would never be me, yet here I am. Tonight, I wish to address the financial challenges of being a teacher. I want to talk about Virginia being number three at 31% in pay disparity for teachers and other professionals with the same education. My 23-year-old daughter Gabby and I are both AHS graduates. We hold undergraduate degrees from Rafford University. I also hold a master's degree from JMU. In October of 2018, Gabby started working for an accounting firm for $60,000 a year. She has degrees in accounting and finance. I saw that little teacher spark in her when she was in elementary school, and I snuffed it out. No, Gabby girl, I don't want you to be an elementary teacher. No Gabby girl, I don't want you to be an elementary teacher. I want you to have a career where you will be shown more respect and make more money than our society is willing to give the teaching profession. With a master's degree and in my twenty-seventh year of teaching, I make sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. I will leave you Gabby's January twenty-twenty pay stub. It shows after just fifteen months, she will gross sixty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars this year before bonuses. This is a five percent raise and she received an additional three hundred dollar bonus in this paycheck. These are gross figures and not our actual take-home pay. The financial problems teachers face are real. Teachers make tough personal financial decisions every month. The last survey showed forty percent of Almarrow County teachers hold at least one part-time job. I am one of them. I work for a nonprofit, Living Free, that works with military families in our community. I opened up Virginia Five Twenty-Nine Savings Plans for my children when they were infants. Their college tuition was paid for when they were in kindergarten. This was the best financial decision I ever made. I drive a nineteen ninety-five Honda Civic. My extended family takes an annual beach trip and a house that my parents pay for. We have never had a family vacation to Disney World. I go to the movies about twice a month and out to dinner about every three months. I couponed when my children were at home. I have no gym membership. I don't attend UVA sporting events. I have never seen the ever-popular Britney Spears. My last concert was six years ago to see Sailor Swift with Gabby. On December thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, Gabby and her fiancee eloped to a northern Virginia courthouse. She will have only one tax return to prepare this year. I'd set aside no money for her wedding, but I'm diligently saving for my own retirement. My family still makes really difficult financial decisions because I'm a teacher. We are professionals and deserve to be paid for the work we do. Words of appreciation do not pay our bills. It is time to significantly raise teacher salaries in Almarrow County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gartner.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Knight, and I am an Almarrow County teacher and have been for the past twenty-one years. My address is eleven nineteen Meriwether Street, Charlottesville, two-two-nine-zero-two. I came here tonight to share some information with you concerning compensation and the concerns of educators within our system. Compensation has always been one of the top concerns of educators, and it will probably continue to be a top concern. It has been said that Charlottesville is our biggest competitor locally. Last year, county salaries were increased by three percent. City teacher salaries were increased by five percent. Inflation and the cost of living reduce the actual buying power that I have. My wages have pretty much kept up with inflation and a little bit more. However, as a teacher of over thirty years, I find it difficult to accept that I am making so much less than the average college graduate just out of school. We compare the percent increases, if we compare the percent increases in our pay to the COLA, which the federal government recently announced to be at one point six percent, this completely negates the classified staff recommended increase of one point five percent. For teachers, it's a little better. We would be getting a zero point nine percent increase. And don't let me start about some staff who are not even making a living wage. I know you get this. The question is, what will you do about it? You may wonder why you don't hear from educators all that often. Honestly, one reason you do not often hear from us is because we are stuck in the bottom of Maslow's hierarchy. We are worn down trying to meet the enormous needs of the students we serve, which creates concerns for us both mentally and physically. I do not have the energy to come and speak about how overwhelmed and overburdened it can feel. I try to appreciate all that I can, and I know that funding is limited, but you have the power to ask for what you think is in the best interest of the county schools for both the students and the staff. A few years back, I encouraged you to ask for more. I'm asking once again. Please consider how to truly address compensation. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Vernon Leckey. I teach at Almarrow High School, and I vote in the Jack Jewett District. All school board members have received emails from teachers expressing their concern about the upcoming budget in regards to teacher compensation. In response I received from school board chair Al Caro, he stated, "Given the first, given that the first word we had from VEA or individual teachers about this important issue was that our budget public hearing on January thirtieth, no changes were made to the school board budget request, which was passed last night and will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors." I appreciate Chair Al Caro's response. I would like the board to consider the following solutions to make sure school board members will consistently be informed about teacher thoughts about the budget and school board policies. I would like to propose that there be a representative for teachers that may serve in a non-voting advisory capacity on the school board, so school board members will be able to consistently have a direct link to concerns that teachers are facing. I believe it is important for students to have a representative on the board, and I believe it should be just as important that teachers have a voice on the board as well. I also believe that the school board truly wants to hear the perspective of teachers in regards to compensation. The members need to fully endorse giving public sector workers the right to collectively bargain. Virginia is currently only one of three states that does not allow its public sector workers to collectively bargain. I would like the school board to hear some excerpts from the February fifth Washington Post op-ed from Richmond Mayor Lavar Stoney. Legislation sponsored by delegate Elizabeth R. Guzman and Senator Jennifer B. Boyzko would lift the ban on collective, public sector collective bargaining in every quarter of the Commonwealth. Our teachers, nurses, firefighters, and law enforcement officers should have the freedom to form a union and bargain collectively for things such as fair pay, adequate staffing, and safe working conditions. A strong public sector has always been one of the most important pathways to the middle class, and strengthening our public sector strengthens our entire community. Just last week, we saw more than two thousand teachers, including many teachers of color, flock to the Capitol to fight for their students. Passing this legislation would give these educators more power to advocate for the children that they teach. It's no coincidence that some of our most revered civil rights leaders, including Edwin B. Anderson, Harry and Harriet Moore, were teachers. They understood that the two keys to advancement for marginalized communities were education and organization. There is strength in knowledge and in numbers. In Virginia, teachers, firefighters, and other public sector workers are asking for a voice, not just for themselves, but also for the communities that they serve. Teachers have spoken of classrooms so crowded that their students sit on the floor. We all are on the front lines of serving underserved communities, and no one is in a better position to advocate for marginalized populations than they are. I encourage all members to join school board members Lee and Olberg and sign on to the labor co-education letter that has been provided to you by Tim Hickey and Becca Saxon. Show your constituents that you support collective bargaining of public sector workers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Leckey. And Ms. Gartner and Ms. Knight. Our next speakers Sandy Richardson, Josh Flaherty, and Julie Stavitsky.
Hi. My name is Robert Vicilio, and I am here on behalf of Charlottesville Public School Charter founder and, uh, school management team member Sandy Richardson to read her words, because she is unable to be here in person. I live in the Ravanna Magisterial District and am a member of the CPS School Management Team and a parent of a current seventh grader at that school. Dear Mr. Al Caro and members of the school board, I'm writing to you as a founder of the Community Public Charter School about the proposal to merge CPCs with Murray High School. This is a bittersweet task, taking great pleasure in the increasing success of CPCs over the past twelve years, mixed with the disappointment both co-founder Bobby Snow and I feel, as individual health issues keep us physically away from the school we started in partnership with ACPS all those years ago. We are fortunate to maintain a close relationship with the school's leaders and so are privy to the impressive work they have done there over the past few years. When Chad Ratliff asked to meet with us three years ago, I confess to anticipating a plan that would close CPCs. Instead, he and Mike Craddock laid out a plan that was directly reflective of the original plan that Bobby and I discussed with AP- ACPS administration nearly fourteen years ago. Based on what Chad and Mike said, it was clear that they had spent a good deal of time studying our original proposal for a small school that would meet the needs of students with creative, energetic teaching, a school that would function as a cooperative effort between founders, administrators, teachers, students, parents, and a management team. That working group would design, redesign, work, and rework plans in order to reach challenging middle school students. It was easy to give my blessing to them three years ago as I envisioned a new life being brought to our proposal. What has occurred at CPCs in the past two years with the able assistance of Stephanie Passman is heartwarming and exciting. The school that is functioning as we had proposed was possible. Having seen what Chad delivered on our behalf, it is easy to have faith in his ability to gather a very hard-working, talented staff dedicated to innovation and sound pedagogy. It is therefore easy to support his proposal to merge the middle school and high school. I would urge you to recognize the deep service that each school brings to its constituencies and to place your faith in Chad, Stephanie, and their, and their staff to create a welcoming, enriching, innovative learning environment for students in grades six through twelve. One more paragraph, can I finish? Thank you. That's sincerely Sandy Richardson.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Josh Flaherty, uh, lead teacher at Murray High School, and this is Julie Stavitsky, lead teacher at, uh, Community Public Charter Middle School.
Murray and Community Charter share a common mission focused on student-centered learning in a laboratory school environment. Both schools emphasize interdisciplinary, project-based learning with an arts-centric focus. Both Murray and Community employ a standards-based mastery model in assessing student progress, and both schools employ non-punitive behavior management systems that emphasize mediation and restorative justice.
Beginning last year and continuing over the summer and into this school year, the high school focused on rethinking our teaching model with a particular emphasis on this year's ninth-grade cohort. In this process, we drew heavily on the middle school's interdisciplinary and project-based educational model. Additionally, we looked at community's work with standards-based grading last year in thinking about ways to develop our own mastery learning approach. Finally, seeing how effectively community teachers use their daily all-faculty morning meeting, we began a similar practice with Murray's teachers.
Cross-collaboration among our faculty, which began last year, has increased this year. We now have several faculty members teaching classes and leading projects in both the middle and the high schools. Currently, three of our high school teachers spend part of their time teaching and planning in the middle school. One of our middle school teachers teaches a photography class in the high school, and our youth entrepreneurship facilitator works in both schools. In addition to our morning middle and high school team meetings, our sixth-to-twelve faculty meets once a week to share what our students have been learning, to implement programs such as mediation consistently across the building, and to grow in our own learning and practice as a faculty.
Another advantage of the co-location of the two schools has been the opportunity for vertical planning. Last year, I had a chance to teach, to work in the middle school, helping with math and science instruction. I worked with a group of sixth and seventh graders preparing for Algebra I and was able to focus the instruction on what I, as a high school math teacher, knew they would need most. At the same time, this experience highlighted for me the areas that I needed to emphasize in my own classes. These sorts of vertical conversations are just the sort that the county would like to see more generally. Our co-location and close collaboration just make them that much easier. Finally, as Murray looks ahead toward the expected adoption of the International Baccalaureate or IB program, we see this as the culmination of the shared mission of the two schools. IB will provide our eleventh and twelfth grade students with new opportunities for interdisciplinary, student-centered learning in the setting of a more rigorous and challenging curriculum.
At Murray and Community, we all operate under the same philosophy and increasingly find ourselves working together to achieve the shared mission of the two schools. Officially merging into one school will only further solidify the work we've been doing and will also create opportunities to further unite our student body as one community. For us, it just makes sense to be one school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next three speakers, well, it's a very risky thing, and I really have murdered that name. Nicole and Chloe Root, Mr. Singh, or Mrs. Singh.
Hello, I'm Nicole Root. I'm here with my daughter Chloe Root, a ninth grader at Murray. We live at fourteen twenty-five Parkside Place, Earlysville, Virginia, two-two-nine-three-six. Um, I'm also a parent council rep for Murray, and we would just like to take a few brief moments to share our Murray journey so far. Chloe and I love Murray, and we're here today because of one email that showed up in my inbox addressed to eighth-grade families one year ago. It was a letter describing a school that valued student choice, content mastery, experiential learning, the integration of arts throughout studies, and most importantly, the student voice. "What in the world was this?" I asked myself. This was the learning experience that Chad had described Murray as, a school on the forefront of change. So, as a mom of a very creative daughter, constantly challenging status quo, a former educator, and an entrepreneur at heart, I decided we needed to go and check it out. If nothing else, just to learn what was being offered in our community as an alternative learning environment, and then perhaps just to relax into the comfort of knowing that a public school was striving for maker-centered learning. We went to the meeting and absorbed all that we could, and then let the possibilities of radical change next year percolate, at least until the lottery results were in. Obviously, Chloe won the chance of attending Murray, but the decision to accept or not was entirely in her hands. Ultimately, she answered yes with knowing that she could always fall back on a traditional model of learning. It didn't take long for her, however, to declare with confidence and passion that she would be at Murray for all four years.
I can't remember a time that I wasn't creating something, whether that was a new invention or a dance that came to mind. Now, at age fifteen, I'm starting to create the life that I want to live, and there's no better place to do that than Murray. Murray isn't a typical high school. You don't just go to get an A, or be taught just to get into college. Murray teaches you how to live through life and how to grow as a lifelong learner. The way we engage through projects and research develops students in a way that motivates us to do more, more in the sense of digging deeper, deeper into knowledge. I would love for the base schools to take Murray as their role model and follow in the footsteps of how this school approaches teaching, discipline, and growth for students and faculty. Another thing I can't rave enough about is how much I feel like I have a voice, not a voice in the background or put to the side, but a voice that is not only heard, but taken into execution. If students here at Murray have an idea, the faculty will support you one hundred percent, and I know this from experience. Each project or idea that comes to mind will go from a thought to reality with a plan and some motivation. Along with flexibility and freedom comes responsibility. Responsibility teaches students how to balance and manage time, as well as receiving as much as they put in. Murray isn't just a high school. It's a place where anyone is welcome, anyone is heard, and anyone who wants to engage in learning. We are all entrepreneurs here, working together to make the school the light for lifelong learners. I am Chloe Root, and I'm proud to be a dragon. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Hornan.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school board. My name is Jennifer Homan, and I am a resident of the Whitehall School District. I am parent to Lucas Homan, who is a sixth grader at Community Public Charter School. I am the co-chair of our PTO. I'm also our parent council rep and a member of the SMT, so I like the school. I came tonight to share feedback about our experience with the school. I have been continuously inspired by this team of innovative and outstanding educators. Their efforts, driven upon the solid body of research, of the effectiveness of project-based interdisciplinary learning, are creating incredible outcomes. Walking into this school, it doesn't feel like a school. It feels like a startup company. People are engaged. The kids are moving, expressing, and trying something new. Sometimes they're cooking in the kitchen. Over the past six months, we have reaped the benefits of this team's tremendous work, both for my child and our family life. One of the first things my son said to me when he started school was, "Mom, this school is great." Instead of saying, "Hey, do this now," we actually get involved. He has been challenged to think for himself, cultivated to do his own, bring his own ideas to fruition, and put in settings where he must present his meaningful work in public settings, such as the solar system project on the downtown mall. Similar to real-life work environments, he gets busy at home without the actual requirement of doing homework to complete a project on time. Most recently, he created a proposal to encourage county students to recycle in schools, which he was able to present to a local nonprofit. The freedom to do it on his own accord changes everything, most importantly, his knowledge and belief in his important contribution and sense of responsibility. I think this is the true measure of the success of the school. These kids are meeting the standards of learning while making important decisions and contributions that can and do impact- that can and do impact our community. Since he is engaged in meaningful ways at school and does not have the pressure of assigned homework, he is able to participate in his extracurricular activities, piano, Boy Scouts, playing with friends, or just coming home to read. We are able to make time for a family meal, which has been really important for our family, without the pressure of having to skimp on time to go ahead and get homework done. My son is grounded, happy, responsible, engaged. Moving into the tumultuous years of adolescence, the kids at Community Middle feel cared for, they feel seen and heard. As such, I am excited about the future of both Community Middle and Murray High and favor the merger of these two schools into one. This makes sense from an organizational standpoint and operational. The current principal and assistant principal are responsible for both schools. Eliminating the operational separation gives the staff the ability to work under the same set of guidelines, creating efficiency for students and staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And this ends our public comment. Oh, okay. All right. Okay.
Sorry. Hello, everybody. I am Sarvishrika Singh, and I am currently a ninth grader at Murray. The journey to where I am today, it was somewhat domotious one, but I believe it was worth the risk. When I was in eighth grade, the realization that I was going to high school hit me like a truck. I knew that these four years would matter the most out of the twelve grades, so I started looking to apply for options to go to. Mesa and HMSA were the most circulated topics at the time about whether we would apply or not. I knew that I was not interested in medicine, so I looked towards Mesa and Engineering Academy. Though I did view engineering as a possible career opportunity, it stood to me rather as a hobby than a passion. I was still undecided, but what pushed me was the fact that my friends were applying to this academy, as well as the fact that it was a rather prestigious and well-known academy. One day, the entire grade was called to the auditorium to listen to the academy presentations. I listened to them probably only about half-interested in what they were saying until the last academy arrived. They talked about this high school I had never heard of before: Murray. A lot of creative art courses they offered were things I was interested in, and the schedule was very flexible. It sounded almost too good to be true. So I looked into it and applied, just thinking that if I got in, I could go there if I was rejected from Mesa. But then, as I was looking into it, and the more I looked into it, the more I liked it. I think what made Murray stand out as a real contender to me was when I came there for a shadow day. Just observing the school's environment for a little bit made me want to come here. When March came, I found out I got into both schools. It was a very stressful fifteen days choosing which school to go to, and although my friends were going to Mesa, which was also a more reputed academy, I eventually chose Murray because I really felt like this school would help me make the most out of these four years. Now, about six months later, I think I can definitely say it has. Since I have come here, I have made amazing friends with whom I planned the snowball dance, an ambitious project in which we built a light tunnel, a stage, a photo booth, a balloon arch, and sectioned a dining hall, all in about two days. I also started learning animation, and currently I'm working on making a library in the school. For the fact that it sounds like all of my projects would have taken up a lot of my time, I was not busy at all, because the flexible schedule allowed me to integrate my personal interest into the school curricula, and I started doing what I really enjoyed doing in my required classes. I don't want to stretch this any longer, so I'll end on this note. I'm really proud of my decision to join Murray, and I know I will come out of this high school prepared for the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Singh. That ends our public comment.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you, everybody, for your comments. Our next order of business is the school board and superintendent business. Dr. Hutz.
I just had a couple notes just to read. I normally don't read my check-ins. Every once in a while, I do read a Friday check-in. Just a quick quote that I'll have for tomorrow is, "History has shown that courage can be contagious and hope can take on a life of its own," from Michelle Obama. I do want to say that this morning, I visited Jack Jewett Middle School's staff meeting at 8:10, and I'm so impressed with the caliber of the team and the student learning focus of the meeting. Keep up the work, great work, Jack Jewett. Monday morning, I had a great time walking the halls of Albemarle High School with Principal Darabanan. As we made our way around the school, we met up with several staff and students doing good work. Geometry teacher Bill Moncowski uses the library space and collaborates with library staff to vary his students' learning experiences. On Monday, students were using their own self-measurements to calculate the golden ratio. Chris Cantone, who is a social studies teacher, is just outstanding. Just happened upon his classroom down across from the cafeteria at school as it was getting started. His door was covered with crime scene tape, and students were waiting outside, and he led them in to do a live crime scene investigation of the assassination of Julius Caesar. It was all Spanish and no English in John Glass's Spanish II class upstairs, and in the art wing, I enjoyed stopping by to visit Diane DiGiacomo, working with a student in ceramics. Diane also showed off the photography lab equipment that's new to Albemarle High School this year. And there's photos of all of those teachers working with students in the update tomorrow. The teachers are wonderful at Albemarle High School, and I think that the students are inspired. I met three super-student leaders who are making leadership-level contributions to Albemarle High School. This refers back to Cheryl Wetmore Simpson's comments earlier about everybody having the potential to do community service, and that, you know, students can start at a very early age. I think we also heard comments from the Murray students and Murray and CPCS staff about the kind of work they're doing, which is intrinsic to them, that they've chosen to do this work, and therefore it's more meaningful. But I also think teachers inspire them. There's a senior at Albemarle High School, Tayuna Bowling, and she is in charge of the PATS desk in the library during a work period that she has. The PATS desk is the student-run help desk at Albemarle High School. Tayuna told me that she loves this job and gets to see three or four students daily to help them with their computer issues during her class period at the desk. And the first thing she does is figures out, can she help the student, or is it something that she needs to work on, and she enjoys the conversation with other students. There's a great student that's also pictured in the check-in, Kakob Rizvi. He's an eleventh grader, and recently, Darra found out that Kakob has been staying after basketball games and cleaning up the stands on his own volition. He even takes on the task after basketball games when Albemarle High School plays at other schools. He just stays after and starts cleaning up. Sometimes other students help, and he often takes it on alone. He says it's a way to be a good sport and to give the custodians a helping hand. Pictured in tomorrow's check-in with Assistant Principal Jason Lee is Senior Shertal St. Luce. She took it upon herself to set up a special meeting night with fifteen students and parents to give them help and support with college applications. I'm so proud of Shertal for her leadership. She talked with staff at Albemarle High School in planning the event, and I would say is now an expert in the field. I know I'm preaching to the choir, but I have to. These three young adults are all examples of what happens when adults get out of the way and let students pursue their natural inclination to simply be useful and to give to their community. And having them do so not only sets them up for success, it lightens the workload for all of us. I had a great time last night at the 15th Annual Division Spelling Bee. It was wonderful. Of course, I could have copied and pasted my announcement from last year because Leila Bober from Henley defended her title last year and won, and then she defended it again last night and won, and she'll be moving on with five other school champions to the Daily Progress Regional Spelling Bee. And I wish them all good luck. Final note, many people in the United States, particularly students, parents, and teachers, join forces on Read Across America Day, and it's held on March 2nd this year. I've noticed on this day in the past that many of our staff get out reading-related T-shirts. I know my wife taught English for many years, and she's got one that speaks to reading. So if our staff, any staff, decide to wear a T-shirt that promotes reading on Read Across American Day, they can email a photo of themselves to Christine Thompson. Last year, we did this for Pi Day, and I had three winners, and they win a free pair of athletic shoes from either of our local running shops, Croze Running or Rag &amp; Mountain. It's open to all employees. So that's my just check-in for this week, and we didn't have any other business except -- I think that's it, right? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any announcements or reports from the school board?
Okay, I have a couple of things. On Monday of this week, Mr. Page and I went up to Stony Point to -- it's my third year at Mr. -- did you go up as well, Judy? Okay, we didn't see you. You were in one of the other sessions. I hope you enjoyed it as much as we did.
I definitely did. I really did.
The taste, it's book tasting, and it's just a round robin of kids going through books that are set aside for them at a table for one minute to look at it, and you pass the book along to your neighbors, and then you rotate around all the different tables. You get to taste about thirty books. It's a wonderful, wonderful event. And on Tuesday night, I was at our local mosque where Kecup's mother was, and Kecup also comes here with Angel to meetings, and so it was a pleasure to meet her, and we had a very eventful evening. And I was over at Stone Robinson, I beg your pardon, I was at Stone Robinson this week, but twice at Monticello, wanted to work with students on their cap project, their senior cap project, and wanted to tour the facility to look at a lot of new programs that they've started up there. And with that, our next order of business is the charter school annual report and charter amendment proposal. Mr. Ratliff.
I'm going to be joined tonight by head teacher Stephanie Passman and lead researcher from the University of Virginia, Shereen Almala. And while we're setting up here, let me also take a moment to think. First, let me take a moment to say that I absolutely agree that all our colleagues in Alamooral County and in this country, that teachers deserve higher pay and for all that they contribute to the world. So, on behalf of everyone here, thank you for that. Our teachers here that are here for one reason and one reason only, they tell me to make sure I don't mess this up. So I'm going to go through our presentation a little bit and then end with what we would like your support on moving forward, and also to the parents and students that are here with us. So, to begin, this is an annual report per policy that I give you to give you an update of the status of our schools academically and otherwise. As some of you may know, I know welcome to the board a couple new members. The original intent of charter schools started back in the late 1980s with AFT president of Al Schanker, who wanted a school model that would allow teachers to experiment with innovative approaches and be empowered to draw on their own expertise to create laboratories from which the traditional public schools can learn. And I think you heard during public comment from some of our staff and students that that's exactly what we aspire to do. Frankly, I was kind of hoping that I could, after hearing that, maybe that should just be the presentation and not take much of your time. But what is a charter school in Virginia? It's a little bit different, and we make sure all our parents understand this, and even students, and you as well. In a charter school in Virginia, it is in state code that that's exactly what we are. We are laboratories for innovation, and in your policy as a board, to the primary objective of charter schools within ACPS is to serve as labs to improve educational opportunities for all students and inform students in instructional methodologies across the division. Of course, we do that in the direction of the mission, vision, and the goals and priorities that you set forward as a board. As you know, we have two schools in one building. The first is Murray High School. I think you heard from Sarvishrika, what she appreciates is about, it's a school in which she can be creative, and she can be empowered, and she can be herself. We have a second school, and it's a middle school reimagined. It's one, as you heard from Mr. Vixelia, who shared the co-founder Sandy's message in that two years, two and a half years ago now, we reset the school to its current model toward its original intent. And we're going to talk a little bit about some successes we've seen there. We already option operate as a six-twelve lifelong learning community. That's what we do. We're just two organizations in the same building, trying to do the same thing for the same students and for the same board. And we are beginning to see specific instances of some of the iterative models of standards-based reporting, for instance, and some of our pedagogies being implemented across the division. The key distinctions in our high school now and for the last thirty-plus years are we are a non-traditional school, now more intensely than ever focusing on the creative arts and design with the International Baccalaureate Program coming on, and a mastery learning model, and we're non-punitive and non-coercive, which means we don't use carrots or sticks. We don't give stickers or ISS or detention. We work through our issues and resolve conflicts through mediation. Key distinctions of our middle school are pretty much identical. It's all project-based, interdisciplinary. We don't have standalone content-specific courses, multi-age model, also non-punitive and non-coercive, and our standards-based reporting model right now is actually being implemented in a couple different middle schools as pilots. To roll very quickly through some general SOL data, you can see a three-year trend with last year's data there on the right. Our schools were showing the sixth grade, the two sixth-grade SOLs, which are math and reading. This is the first cohort to ever go through this model. So as you can see, through the model implementation, we are seeing some academic results, as well as anyone locally or across the state of Virginia. Our high school is very similar on every SOL test and generalized percentages. We also fared very well against our counterparts across the Commonwealth. And I'd like to take a moment to turn it over to Shereen to talk a little bit about some of the early research findings that she's found as an embedded researcher in our school.
All right. Thank you very much for having me. My name's Shereen Almala. I'm at the Curry School at the University of Virginia. We partnered as part of our Remaking Middle School Initiative, which is a national initiative that is looking at taking everything we've learned in the past couple decades on the science of teaching and learning, and particularly developmentally, what's happening in adolescents, and figure out how schools can serve everything we've learned a little bit better. And so we're really excited about the work we've done with Community Middle in particular. And what we did last year was partner to do a rollout evaluation of how some of those key distinctions that you saw, the mastery-based assessment and project-based learning, how those were being perceived by the students, teachers, parents. And so what I'm going to show you here are pulled-out results from a larger evaluation report that come from a survey. We used the Panorama Survey, which came out of Harvard. School of Education has been used nationally in forty-six states and over eleven thousand schools, which gave us nice comparative data. And we wanted to look at some of the academic outcomes that speak to the students' experience, so beyond achievement. What is their attitude towards learning? What's their attitude towards failing? Do they have failure-positive attitudes? What is their just overall experience as a student in a school that doesn't follow your traditional model, and then how does that compare to schools that do? In all of my studies with schools, I've never seen it that you don't see any student report those lower two on that Like-Art scale, that you don't find things at schools not at all interesting or slightly interesting. Usually, even as a joke, they typically put that response at least once. So this is the first time we've seen that. And when we looked at the national norm data, the averages for the results of all the survey items were significantly higher than what you've seen across the country in schools similar and non-similar. And then, looking at their engagement, how excited are you about coming to school? You feel that when you're in the school, it comes through in the numbers when we look at it through these surveys, that students are excited to be there, and I think it's harder to get them to leave than to come in, which again is something that's pretty rare to see.
So we looked at the things that we have been doing, and we are certainly working toward increasing the vision among our students as we look at our information sessions. Over the course of the past few months, we held three information sessions during the day and in the evening at our school, and you see that we had over two hundred families pre-registered come out to those events. And then with that eye toward equity, making sure that the message is shared with every single family in our school division, we held a variety of off-campus events collaborating with avid teachers. And then with that eye toward equity, making sure that the message is shared with every single family in our school division, we held a variety of off-campus events collaborating with avid teachers, school counselors, school administrators, teachers. We're so thankful for the partners at all of those schools, enabling us to reach all of the members of Alamooral County Public Schools. So when we look at our applications, our window closed at the end of January, and we see a majority coming in as rising sixth graders, so that current fifth grade class certainly seeing that interest in people who are interested in that entire three-year middle school experience to start off with us. And we are feeling good about a representation from our school division as well as out-of-district just indicates people who plan to be moving into Alamooral County for the next school year. This is for our middle school applications. And then we see a similar trend with our high school applications coming in to the ninth grade. So again, coming for that full four-year experience seems to be the greatest interest. And again, feeling really strongly about the representation among our middle and high schools as well as those who are coming into Alamooral County Public Schools.
And while we're at it, I wanted to recognize one unique group of students that we have here with us tonight, the nation's first public school squash team. If you could stand up, please. And the coaches, please stand. What started as an idea and a small donation a couple of years ago, has evolved into this fascinating, or manifested itself into this fascinating phenomenon in our school and in the area. We played, we play mostly in tournaments because very few schools have squash teams, although we did just ink our first school versus school match a few weeks ago. And our girls' team played St. Anne's Belfield's girls' team. We fared very well, particularly given that we practice one day a week in our gym, but through a great partnership we have with Boars Head and that gentleman there in the right-hand corner, Coach Dean Russell, is in, he unfortunately couldn't be here tonight and is the real brains and operation between, behind how good these students have gotten at this very unique sport that is a door-opening sport into some college opportunities as well. But tomorrow night, we have our second match with St. Anne's, boys and girls, and then we play in another tournament on Saturday. We are at about thirty students right now, six, twelve, that are playing on this team. And I highlight them for several reasons, not only because they are the very first public school team, but it also really illustrates what the six, twelve continuum can look like. And it was very seamless. We practiced together, they learned together. Sometimes you see the older kids working with the younger kids. And some of our returning younger kids are teaching the older kids. And so it works out very well and is a shining example on the athletic side of things of how well these two schools can function. And you've certainly heard throughout the night about ways in which we can work together academically and otherwise. And that leads me to the final part of the presentation, and that is the request to merge the two schools. In your packet on the agenda item, you have a letter from me requesting the, that the two schools be merged into one, into one six, twelve school temporarily called Murray Community School as a placeholder. Murray, per your policy, is under the name review process. So we consider this, the opportunity to accelerate that process since we're on the, on the list anyway. So that's something that, that we will be seeking direction for. But, but as, I don't think I need to repeat what you've already heard from the people who do the work the best. And you have my letter there in front of you and proposed amendment to the Murray Charter to incorporate CPCS grade six through eight into it. Thank you. And with that, what questions do you have?
Any questions?
Chad, can you give us an update? I remember last year, we had asked about your projected enrollment. I think you were aiming to get a hundred and fifty. Is that what you got to?
Across the building? Yeah. So, so our growth strategy was thirty per, per entry point, so thirty students in the sixth and then thirty in the ninth, thirty in the ninth. Next year will put us at a little over one hundred in the high school, and we're at about sixty in the middle school. So we would add another fifteen. So that'll put us at about a hundred and eight, a hundred seventy-five, a hundred and eighty next year, bringing sixty new students in.
And you're at one hundred and fifty this year?
Ish.
And then what's the demographic breakdown?
I didn't bring that in front of me right now, but I can give those statistics. We are-
Has it changed since last year?
It has changed. We are roughly, and I can send you the specifics, but we are roughly seventy-four percent white and the remaining are students of color. We did see an increase in diversity, actually our most diverse class that we know of, at least in the history of the school, with this incoming sixth and ninth grade cohort.
Can you remember income?
I cannot, no. I can get that to you though in a follow-up email.
Oh, I mean, I, this is the same concerns I said last year when we had this presentation. I think, I think per pupil, we spend about fifteen thousand dollars per kid for Murray. It's our most expensive school. I love hearing from the students who are benefiting from the programs that it's offering, but I think it's, I mean, to continue to, to support it, we have to be making sure that it's reaching all of our students. And so that's important information for me. I mean, the income alone, I want to know what types of students feel that this is a truly accessible resource for them. So that's information I would want to know. And ideally, I like your, I like your presentations, and they're short and sweet, which I always appreciate. But I would like to see that included when you bring the presentations back.
I will. I'll certainly do that. And again, we'll follow up with, with an email. And we did, as, as I mentioned last year, we did very specific outreach to, to inside communities, not just with schools, thanks to actually some, to some parent support. We were, we did an outreach event in Southwood. We did, so we're really trying very, very hard to, to spread the message as much as we can and not, and not-
Just, Lindsay, if you could go back one slide, just to frame the purpose of tonight is we're looking for feedback and some formal direction on next steps around this committee, specifically around policy and where you want it to live.
And to that end, if I could just clarify that question, that, that comment, I mean, are you looking from, do we set up a policy for it? Do we take the resolution that we passed a year and a half ago and convert that to policy as opposed to a resolution? I understand the structure of it, you know, the question in that.
Specifically, if you want it to be a school board advisory committee, there is a specific policy that would have to be edited to include this. So that's the first decision point. And then if yes, then the purpose and membership.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Carlson?
My question is, can you give us a brief explanation of what's the difference? So like superintendent, I'm assuming the superintendent appoints, or what's the difference? And if it's a school board, I assume we get our, each appointment, one appointment and superintendent? I'm trying to look up the policy.
So currently, the school board has, and someone can correct me if I don't cover them all, you have certain advisory committees that report directly to you, long-range planning advisory, school health.
So that's the difference, so it's going to report to?
So they would report directly to you. All meetings are public. Ross can chime in and other, that's the big difference.
That's, just legally, that's the, you know, the big difference. If you have a group reporting to the superintendent, the requirements of the Freedom of Information Act do not, do not apply, but an advisory group reporting to the board, it would.
So it's not quite the same as things like the legislative committee that, that school board members sit on?
That's an option to consider as well. It's a great parallel.
And, but if we decide as a group that that's what it should be, to have board members on it, that's okay too. I mean, I think that's what we need to kind of talk about and, and thrash out in terms of the vision of it. I think the, there was a great presentation because, I mean, it gives us not only an awareness of what was going on, and this isn't the first one, you know, and, and there's a real value. And I know Helen Dunn is here. Mrs. Dunn, the solar bill that was before to expand the capability for schools, did that come out of committee or get passed in one of the houses? Okay, okay, so there's a chance, a good chance for expansion? Good, okay, great. So just from a thought point of view, what do we think on this?
I think I'd like to get the report given to us directly because I think one of the goals when we set out was to have a better understanding as board members of the different initiatives and various environments that they're doing.
I can't hear you.
I didn't want to make it sound again.
Don't.
I just wondered if it wouldn't be more efficient if we couldn't get more done as superintendent's committee? Because there are less hoops to jump through as opposed to just get it done? I don't know. I just throw that out.
I guess my inclination, I guess because Katrina and I were noodling about this before, would be to have a school board advisory committee because we could ask the questions, we could, you know, ask for specific work on different areas and be advised about all the things we should be doing. That would be my inclination. And whether or not there's school board members on it, I don't have a preference one way or the other on that.
I agree. And to your point, Dave, I would say, even if it is, and I may be getting this wrong, even if it's reporting to the superintendent, ultimately I'd want a report from the superintendent. So I guess why not go directly to the source? Because I'd want a report. I do want a report.
I do too. Mike?
Want to be able to ask questions.
My thought's not the, and we can, we can, we can ask questions of the superintendent's committee too. The only issue is one of, if they want to have a meeting, they have to publicize it five days in advance. They have to, we have to appoint them. They serve for particular terms. There's, there's much more of a logistic procedural dance. And this is the kind of thing, it's like, look, we know what we need to do, we know where we need to go. I kind of just want to, let's just do it. But, you know, it's, it's not, you know, with long-range advisory, it's really a, gee, what do we need to do? How should we do it? Where are we going? And I hope that as a, as a, I hope, I'm stupid if I believe this, but I really hope. I really hope that as a community and as a country, we recognize, we have to do this. It's not, it's not an if. It's not a, gee, maybe we should, like, protect the environment. And I just, I wonder if it wouldn't be more efficient and to get things done as opposed to have meetings to talk about it.
Well, I think having people apply to be appointed, I think there's a greater investment in the work product. And, you know, we could, we could select a wide range of people's skill sets and interests. And I think having it on public record is a good thing.
I agree. I, I'm FOIA, I'm fine with FOIA applying. I mean, FOIA can be a good, a good tool.
FOIA would apply for anything?
That's what I thought.
FOIA applies to anything. It's, it's the Open Meetings Act law, which means that if something comes up-
I thought you were talking about FOIA, and I was like, who applies?
No, if something comes up, they're like, oh, we should do that. Well, we can't because we have to give notice of having the meeting and then we have to, I mean, and we have to, I mean, it's just, it, there are procedural rules that you have to follow, which aren't a bad idea for a lot of things, are very important. But when there are things that we know need to get done, we don't have a, we don't have a committee about, like an appointed committee for transportation, right? We have, we have experts in transportation who do that. And so I frankly, I think, I trust Matt to appoint a broad spectrum of the board to get it done. And I think they're just going to have more ability to actually take action if we take some of the, because the reality is, and I don't know what your guys' experience is, but I recognize when I get my applications for certain positions, appointed positions, that the people are like, well, I'm kind of building my, my, you know, my resumes, who I can do this next thing. This wouldn't be building the resume to do the next thing. This would be doing the thing that needs to get done. But I, I, I'm not so attached to this that I have a problem if you guys want to do it. It's, it's fine.
The thing, I don't think-
I think the school advisory, the school health advisory committee is a good model. I mean, and I, you know, they're responsive to, we could, you know, give them a, they come up with their own ideas, but in addition, we can ask specific questions about health issues. And I think it's worked very well.
And the open meeting requirements don't bother me as much either because I would appreciate when other community members could, if they could join in and attend the meetings and, you know, provide feedback. But I also am not so tied to it that it's like, maybe Matt could provide us some guidance. What is another, I mean, I know the ones that report to the school board because they report to me and we appoint people. What is some superintendent advisory groups in? Are you happy with the process?
I, first of all, I have no preference. So whatever you all choose to do, we can make work. Because there's, I think there's advantages and disadvantages to each approach and they, they counterbalance each other. So for example, with having a board advisory, there is more, there are more structural pieces to it that you have to get in place. However, they do report right to the board. So like long, long-range planning advisory is a good example. They come to a board meeting, they make a presentation, you take it straight from there and work on it. So once you get all the logistical stuff done up front, it really does, it's a seamless communication between the board. And you also have a magisterial district approach of having applicants to do it. So you do get better spread around the county than what we might get with a superintendent's advisory. A superintendent's advisory, it's true, we can, we can kind of move it a little quicker and get it started. However, I think there is some detachment from direct communication with the board. Like, for example, one that we have right now is a, is a safety advisory committee that meets quarterly. And they do a lot of talking and they, they'll give direct, they would give direct advice or direct recommendations to me or to Nick King, and we work those through his office. However, unless we, unless you or we say, hey, we should let the board know about this, the things that they're recommending to do, the ideas that they have, show up in other ways. So they'll show up in perhaps the funding request or maybe a grant they're applying for, something like that. So, you know, it's, to me, it's just your preference. And what I'm hearing is that, what I heard initially and what I'm hearing is that there's a desire on the part of the board to have a more direct connection to the work that's going on around sustainability in the schools. And if you want that direct connection, and if you want to have a committee that reports right to you, then I would say that a board advisory would be the most appropriate. Also, we did have a pretty good, we really had quite a discussion about this when we had our cabinet meeting and also our, when we rehearsed for this board meeting, you know, just our, what we thought on the cabinet. And one of the other things we talked about was, we think it's important for the board to have members on the committee, like as part of a subcommittee of the board to develop. Clearly, you have two particular board members right now. I know you're all interested, but Ms. Carlson and Dr. Acuff, you have an interest. So what you could do is have a subcommittee, just the two of you, because if you have more than two, obviously, then it becomes a board meeting. And you could work directly with, with Ms. Snoddy to develop the organizational structure around the advisory, separate from the board, come back to the board and say, this is what we, we think will make a good structure for this. And then you could be the executive committee for that committee so that you all could meet, you could plan the, the meeting structure, you could talk a lot about how you're going to handle all the logistics of it. And then you have the larger committee meeting that takes place. My, I really, I'm, I'm really very interested in the idea around some of the work that the board does becoming more a subcommittee, executive committee, and a larger board advisory committee because it really facilitates much better communication with the board. This is a high priority item. Another thing I'm just thinking about right now as we go into our strategic plan review, this is a good example of a much more contextual and specific objective for the board. You notice right now, one of our objectives is we're going to be efficient, basically. Well, that's very global and doesn't speak to a more specific objective that the board might have. So something coming out of that, out of the strategic plan review and a new strategic plan, the board might say, well, one of our objectives is we're going to be, we're going to be a sustainable school system and put some metrics around that so that we can begin to chip- And put some metrics around that so that we can begin to chip away at it in a real way. You know, if we said we were going to be carbon neutral as a school system, well, how do we know what our overall carbon count is now? That would be really neat to tabulate and then take specific steps. And this advisory group could really help with that, because we sure have some, we have strong experts out in the community, but we also have a lot of people that are just really passionate and interested. They may not have their credentialing, but they're certainly vested, and they have great ideas to contribute. So I'm, my, you know, what I'm hearing the board say would be more of a board advisory.
No, I was just going to echo, we don't have a, I just didn't mean to get tripped up on the first one. We brought it up because in our research, we couldn't find ones that were directly to the board, and we also just needed to know the next step. So if it's a board interest, then it's a policy is the next step, so. But I'm echoing Dr. Haas in that we don't have a preference, we just need direction.
Ms. Lee, do you have any thoughts on this?
I agree, I think, I like what you were talking about in terms of the smaller committee, the subcommittee and executive committee, I think that could get a lot of work done.
I would just like to commend, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Nope. Ms. Snotty and Ms. Schmidt for putting together this overview of the environmental efforts that the division has made. I mean, that was a huge part of what I was interested in, but I think we have a good base to build on. And I'm looking forward to however we decide to do it.
Well, I think, is there somewhat of a consensus that we could just do a motion to form a new subcommittee? And appoint Dr. Acuff and Mrs. Carlson to it to work on the development of this project? And, and to keep us abreast of what's going on. And, and it doesn't mean that this is a permanent subcommittee, it doesn't have to be that. But, because you two had brought this to us and it just seems to make sense.
And are we still going to be doing that, a school board committee?
Yes.
So maybe that reports to the school board and we want to have school board members.
We would be the executive committee with staff to develop the structure.
Right, yes.
Asso move.
Second. Ms. Johnson, do we have a roll call on this?
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Carlson? Yes. Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Lee? Yes.
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 Okay, the motion passes, and so it's in your hands. And, you know, and it's not just, you know, you've got wonderful people here to work with and the staff on it and the development and all.
I already have a vision, I'm thinking a weekly meeting.
Yeah. Like at 7:30 in the morning?
Sounds good. Terrific.
I would like to withdraw my name.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we take about a 10-minute break? And we'll be back with educational broadband and our regularly scheduled anti-racism policy implementation. Our educational broadband service lease agreement with Chantel. And? Christine, are you leading this?
Oh, Ross, oh, fortunately you have me first.
Wow. There you go.
Ah, oh my goodness.
The opening act. Good evening, I, I'm aware that you all know what the educational broadband service is. But just for the, the audience, it's a band of spectrum that the FCC established for the public good about 15 years ago. I'm sorry, established, and then about 15 years ago, the FCC opened it up to other broadband services. So as a result, the vast majority of EBS license holders, such as the Albemarle County Public Schools, have leased out their capacity to commercial providers who will use it as well as the educational purpose for which we will use it as well. So that's what we've done too. The ACPS owns a license for one of the four blocks of broadband spectrum in this area. Charlottesville, Flavanna County Public Schools, and the Miller School hold the other regional licenses. Those entities have already leased their licenses to Chantel, officially the Shenandoah Telecommunications Company. So that the ACPS is the only remaining unleased block of broadband spectrum in the region. Chantel had an interest in obtaining the final block of spectrum that would allow the company greater opportunity to provide broadband service. And the Albemarle County Public Schools are seeking a revenue stream, stream through lease payments to fund its efforts, efforts to furnish internet services in areas of the county without an internet signal. So this made for a good match for both of us. I want to report that we have successfully concluded negotiations with Chantel for a 10-year lease of our EBS, or educational broadband service license with two 10-year renewals. These renewals would essentially be automatic unless there's a breach of the terms of the lease. The reason for such a long-term lease is so that the cost of building out the broadband service can be amortized and revenues generated over a period of time sufficient to make that effort financially viable. During this time, the Albemarle County Public Schools will receive lease payments from Chantel that will escalate over the duration of the lease. Dr. Diggs will elaborate on the business terms in greater detail. But before she does, I want to advise that because Chantel had already leased three of the four blocks of EBS spectrum in this region, there was no other enterprise that would have bid on a lease for our remaining block of spectrum at a price that Chantel was willing to pay to acquire it. For this reason, we conducted a sole-source public procurement in accordance with the requirements of the Virginia Public Procurement Act and the Albemarle County Purchasing Manual. That extended the procurement process, but ensured that we would be able legally to enter into the lease upon your approval. And now Dr. Diggs will describe the business terms in greater detail for you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. I'm Dr. Christine Diggs, Chief Technology Officer. I'm happy to be here with you. I want to give you basically an update to my December presentation that I gave you about our efforts to provide internet to students at home and our educational broadband spectrum. To go back to our core purpose, the Virginia Department of Education has identified a learning-at-home gap. We refer to it as achieving digital equity, because this gap describes a multitude of missed learning and life opportunities by students who lack access to technology or high-speed broadband internet in their homes. I talked to you in December about our wanting to take a combination approach to addressing the digital equity as identified by the state and by our school division. We call it ACPS at Home, and that's our effort to provide Kajit hotspots to our out-of-range families and also, according to your board direction in December, those who can't afford internet access at home. We will continue to promote low-cost internet programs where they're available within our county. We are partnering closely with county government on their projects to increase broadband service. We've been working with the Albemarle Broadband Authority. And now, the final step in our combination approach is this proposed lease for your consideration with Chantel. The benefits that we see with this lease, the biggest is the revenue, that will allow us to provide those Kajit devices without impacting our operational budget. It's a public-private partnership that will provide direct benefits to our students. It will utilize our EBS spectrum to a much fuller potential than we were ever able to realize ourselves. And it provides expanded opportunities for Chantel to serve our county residents with improved broadband service. Want to reiterate, our goal is to achieve digital equity under this new approach for 90% availability for our secondary students at home by 2021. 90% availability for our secondary students at home by 2021. What questions do you have?
Questions?
When would the lease start?
It will start in May.
Following FCC regulations. That's their term.
Is the Albemarle Broadband Authority a party to this in any way, shape, or form?
They will be after this presentation.
Okay, okay, good.
It was not public or shared before it came to you.
Okay.
I anticipate they will be very interested and see it as a positive.
Okay, and I was asking that because, you know, as we've talked about before, this was the vision initially for the school kids, you know, the students. And it just seemed more logical to spread this across because, as you're saying in, I think, the last slide, you know, this is more exposure for the entire county.
Yes.
How many hotspots are you looking at in order to get our last 10% of the students?
So, we're thinking it's going to end up being 7% to 10% because of, there's probably going to be some that we just can't reach with any kind of a hotspot signal, although Kajit gives us the best odds for achieving close to the 10% because there's five different carriers that we can work within, right? But that's roughly 500-ish, and at the cost that we're looking at with the proposal that's now in purchasing with Kajit, this revenue of $8,100 a month will cover it.
So, is 500-ish is the number of students?
Uh, hotspot, actual hotspots.
Oh, actual hotspots, okay, great.
Two households. So, the number of students could be higher because there could be multiple students in the household.
That's great, that's great. Other questions? Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Diggs. Yep, thank you.
In terms of the contract, is that something that we can put on consent agenda unless there's objection?
Yes, we were thinking that once you have the information, if you have questions, we can answer it the next time if needed. If not, it certainly is appropriate for a vote on the consent agenda.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
I should also let you know that we took the precaution of having Chantel sign first, so we know that when you approve it, and I'm not telling tales out of school because we'd let Chantel know that we have a public process. They, in dealing with other public entities in the area, they certainly know the drill, but we said that we were going to make a presentation to you, but that once it's approved, once we, because we already have their signature, we'll have our agreement intact.
Okay. Well, let me ask the board, is there anything else that we need in terms of information, or can we just put this on the consent agenda? On the consent agenda? Okay, let's put that on.
Done. Thank you.
Next up, our anti-racism policy implementation. This is our regularly scheduled quarterly update, and we welcome everybody involved. And Dr. Harrison, I think you'll probably kick us off.
Evening.
Evening.
Thank you for this opportunity to update you on the implementation of the anti-racism policy. You requested that you, we update you every 60 to 90 days, and our last presentation was October 24th. It's like forever ago, but it's only been 69 school days since then, so we are on track. Today, I would like to just provide you this update as information and, of course, your feedback as always. For the next 35 minutes, we will first reintroduce key components of the Anti-Racism Project Charter. Second, we will walk you through a logic model that represents key activities, strategies, and outcomes to carry out the foundation work to begin our journey of striving to become an anti-racist school division. Third, we will receive a status update on the work in progress on the 27 regulations of the policy. Fourth, you will be introduced to sample connectors. We call them training tools that are being used with our steering committee members to begin their journey, their journey of understanding how to identify those values, to identify those challenges and structures, to change behaviors as they strive to become anti-racist. As a point of information, I believe that it's extremely important for us to understand the connection between the opening statement in the anti-racism policy and our equity mission statement. So just take a minute on your own to read those two. Personal thought, by connecting these two statements, we are making a powerful statement to this Albemarle community that we cannot fulfill our mission, our vision, our values, and goals without confronting racism from an equity lens. That's a powerful statement that we're committed to. It's in writing. We have a 17-member cross-functional steering committee team. They are major, major role players in our ability to effectively plan and lead the implementation of this policy. Some may describe this project as the most critical and the most complex work of our time, or your time, as board members and for us as educators in this division. I certainly concur. Since our last update, the steering committee has increased from 13 to 17 members. We've added four new members, Cassandra Blunt, our new division procurement officer, and two student representatives. Catherine Taylor and Aleah Hawkins, they are being mentored by one of our three equity specialists and supervised by her, Ayana Mitchell. The fourth new member is Jasmine Fernandez, our new project manager. We have four members who are here. Would you like to stand to be acknowledged for making the commitment? This whole team is making a tremendous commitment to carry out this huge work. So, thank you all. One, two, three, four? Yes, thank you. Also, as a reminder, our eight student leaders, who I consider forward thinkers, crafted this policy under these five categories: policy communication, leadership and administration, curriculum and instruction, professional learning and training, and policy enforcement as a way of regulating our deliverables. I would like to invite Jasmine Fernandez, our new project manager, to introduce our planning model and to share updates on the work in progress. Jasmine?
Thank you. Thank you. As Dr. Harrison mentioned, my name is Jasmine Fernandez. In my role as a project advisor, I am providing strategic planning support on a variety of different projects, including the anti-racism policy. Since this is my first time addressing you all by way of background, I recently joined the division in September after serving at the New York City Department of Education for six years. My background is in strategic planning and community outreach.
How you doing?
I'm doing well.
Forget about it.
And as it relates to the implicit bias initiative that we launched in NYC, I helped to support and triage the communications role up. And so with that, given my experience and background, I'm incredibly excited and delighted to be joining this work and helping to support the implementation of the anti-racism policy. To get us started, I'm going to spend some time talking about our logic model. How many of you are familiar with logic models? So, as some of you are aware, a logic model is essentially a roadmap that includes key inputs and outputs of a program. Here in the division, we use this tool to organize our efforts and monitor our progress. And so I would like to spend some time walking you through the key components of our logic model before I share updates so that you have context as to what we're working towards. As Dr. Harrison mentioned, we believe the anti-racism policy and ACPS equity vision statement complement each other. The implementation of the 27 deliverables will ultimately allow us to enhance and model the ACPS vision for equity. In order to get there, we've strategized key activities and shorter outcomes for each of the five categories. If you turn to the front of your sheet, the one that says "primary", the second row, "leadership and administration," you'll see the key strategies include equity needs assessment, alternate discipline programs, continuous improvement in training and materials. Some of the short-term outcomes include recommendation course procedure, which I will touch on in a bit, identifying the process and practices that cause inequitable outcomes for students and staff, and schools will have guidance on what disciplinary data to collect, and it continues forward. However, as you can see in this graphic, this work is complex, and it has multiple deliverables. So we had each of our subcommittees create logic models for their specific deliverables. If you flip to the back of that sheet, you'll see the specific logic model for the leadership and administration subcommittee. They have specific responsibilities assigned to people to ensure accountability and follow-up. And like Jay, Nick, and Daphne, all of the members on the subcommittee are part of a larger team and/or collaborate with other teams throughout the division to help embed and amplify the work of the anti-racism policy within their existing roles. It's important to acknowledge that while we have tentative deadlines, logic models are meant to be dynamic. We understand that there may be times where we have to rethink our approach and therefore have to shift some dates. Second, as you're glancing through the different strategies and outcomes, you'll notice this work is cross-functional and multi-prom. If you flip back to that front page, it's not the sole responsibility of one team to carry this work out. It's a shared responsibility across the entire division, and as such, there are many layers. This work is going to take time, hence the four-year mark. However, we are engaging in legacy work here, meaning that in order for the outcomes to be successful and sustainable beyond this cabinet and beyond the school board, we have to be intentional about the implementation of this work. One of my favorite African proverbs is, "If you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together." And we're trying to go far here. We need everyone to do their part in moving this important work forward. I am now going to transition us into updates. Please note, all of the updates are very important, but because of time, I want to be mindful, so I'm going to bring your attention to a few updates within each of the categories. If you should have questions regarding items I don't touch on, we'll be more than happy to answer those questions at the end of my comments or offline. As it relates to policy communications, per the policy, we've established a student diversity equity committee. The student leaders will serve as spokesperson and will help to amplify this work within their schools, including training their peers on the policy. We've had small-scale student advisory meetings throughout some of the high schools, and tomorrow, the identified members among all of the high schools will convene and kick off their first official meeting as the Student Diversity Equity Committee. Now that the posters are available at schools, department offices, and central, we've launched a compliance form which requires schools and offices to confirm the placement of the poster and request additional posters for their classrooms and workspaces. To date, 200 additional posters have been requested. Moving on to leadership and administration, I would like to bring your attention to the first bullet point. To address disparities in ACPS secondary course participation, we recently implemented a new course recommendation procedure for families in which both students and families are joint collaborators. This process is intended to ensure we're not boxing students into classes, but also, we want to empower our scholars to self-select courses that align with their interests and their educational trajectory. One example of what this process looks like is the current structure at Albemarle High School. They posted informational sessions regarding what classes are available. They've encouraged students to take approximately two weeks to digest and walk through their courses with their parents and loved ones. Afterwards, the counselor meets with the student to further discuss. The student then meets with the teacher, and the teacher provides their recommendation using one of our sample languages we've drafted. We're really trying to focus on strength base, and so if we're going to make a recommendation of which courses, how do we honor their ability and their interests and where they are in this trajectory? But ultimately, it's the student's choice that is prioritized. If I can bring your attention to the last bullet point. Lastly, in alignment with the anti-racism policy and your charge to recruit and retain minority teachers, we've launched a review of exit surveys from teachers of colors dating as far back as five years. We are aware that the experience of teachers of color in ACPS are often different than those of their white colleagues. Therefore, we understand that learning more about all of these dynamics is crucial to retaining a diverse teaching staff. We are seeking to learn more about the experiences of teachers of color and the role that human resources can play in establishing a professional environment that best supports teachers of color to be and feel successful. Curriculum and instruction. We created a culturally responsive and anti-racism tool and also developed in-house an anti-racist English language arts framework, which are meant to serve as tools that examine bias in curriculum. We're still going through our internal vetting process, but we look forward to formally rolling out these tools to teachers this summer. Professional development. As you may recall, per the directive of the policy, this summer we trained over 1,200 educators in culturally responsive teaching through community conversations. And Dr. Joseph Williams, UVA professor whose research focuses on racial equity and implicit bias, will be conducting a training on structural and institutional racism for our principals and divisional leaders next week. If you're interested in stopping by, please let us know and we can share the details for that training. We would certainly love to have you there. Policy enforcement. The Anonymous Alert app has a filter for racial harassment. A current issue is the reporter's description can sometimes be vague. So what do I mean by that? This is a real example that we received. It says, "People are being mean. They are using the N-word." However, the reporter did not provide any specific information as to who said it, when it was said, where it was said. And so we're working with the vendor to explore opportunities to strengthen communication between the reporter and the administrator. I want to just make a note that the reporter can be anyone. It can be a student, it can be an administrator, it can be a parent, it can be a community member. And at this time, the two-way communication is automatically turned off unless the reporter turns it on. And so we are working with the vendor without having to compromise the identity of the reporter to enable the chatroom option so that the administrator can ask follow-up questions. So, I've shared a lot of information just now, so I'm going to just take a pause and see if there are any immediate questions. Otherwise, we can keep going and take questions at the end.
It's not the immediate question, but thank you for coming to our community. You're awesome.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
When did you say the training was going to take place next week?
Next week?
Next Wednesday.
Okay.
Are you talking about the one with Dr. Joseph Williams?
Yeah.
Yes, next Wednesday. It's our leadership meeting, so all of our principals and divisional leaders. It'll be at Center One, and we can share more of the details. We have a couple of more slides, if you wouldn't mind, unless there are more questions. We're almost done, I promise. I know you've had a long night. I'm now going to turn it over back to Dr. Harrison, who is going to talk to you about some of the sample connectors. These are essentially icebreakers that we do with our steering committee to have them examine what it means to be an anti-racist leader.
Yes, we would certainly invite, enjoy having you all at the training next week. We will start with a presentation by Dr. Williams and follow up with some activities with our leadership team on the anti-racism policy. As you can see, this is a complex challenge of connecting the multiple parts of building a collective efficacy model. The long-term goal is about shifting the division's culture to cultivating practitioners of becoming anti-racists in theory and practice. Not an easy task. The truth of this matter, if we do not build the capacity among ourselves to recognize, to call out, and to own individual and institutional biases, the same conversations will be reoccurring in 2025, 2030, 2035, and beyond. We, as a collective committee, are modeling courageous conversations to influence gradual shifts to becoming anti-racist thinkers first and doers. Each steering committee meeting begins with what we call a connector. We have three samples, just to share with you. Here's the first sample. Committee members were asked to select a lower or a higher-level discussion point to engage in conversation with the colleague. We offered a lower-level conversation starter for those who may find it easier to talk about being a conscious or unconscious practitioner of structural racism. Much easier to talk about structures than talk about self. This could be those structural conversations, could be about tracking of students, it could be about labeling of students, it could be about programs that label students such as special education or gifted, it could be about hiring practices within our structures or selecting curriculum resources. We offered a higher-level example for those with the comfort level of sharing personal acts of individual racism as defined by the policy. These conversations were designed to open a level of trust within our committee and to value, and to establish some value in applying and understanding the definition of individual and structural racism. Bottom line, we all need to practice having open and honest conversations about race before we can become anti-racists in thought and actions. Here's a second example. I want you to just take a minute first and read that to yourself. of individual racism based on specific instances occurring in Alamoan County public schools. This connector encouraged our committee members to think about steps they would take as leaders to help others understand and apply the definition of an anti-racist. Here's a third example. What we've attempted to do with these connectors, we've attempted to make them more challenging each session to stretch those folks on the committee. This example is probably the most challenging of the three because it creates a shift in one's thinking towards accountability for unpacking a level of understanding of being an anti-racist. There's also a self-evaluation component built in. We offered these examples to emphasize the importance of this committee to take on the responsibility of unpacking their own biases and gauging their degree of racism, if it exists, within them. We look forward to sharing similar connectors with this board, as well staff, that we will be working with in the future. Jasmine, would you like to share?
So in an effort to align messaging and ensure transparency, we are kicking off a public awareness campaign this spring. One of the items we'll be releasing is an anti-racism brief. It's essentially an informational one-pager that outlines what does it mean to be an anti-racist. It includes attributes associated with being an anti-racist, common FAQs, as well as some common definitions. And in fact, we're actually presenting the brief to the leaders next Wednesday at our leadership meeting to make sure that we have their feedback incorporated. Once we finalize our brief, we will post it onto the anti-racism webpage. We plan to also post our logic model for the public, as well as other recommended resources, including some sample connectors, book recommendations, and links to self-assessments. We're going to also identify and tailor PD on the anti-racism policy for targeted groups. This was something that we spoke about at length at our last steering committee. It was one of our colleagues who really brought it up and said, "How do we continue to embed this among all of our employee groups across the division?" And so we spent time thinking about, what does that look like? Whether I'm a bus driver, or office assistant, or, you know, a TA, how do I make it clear to folks that there's a connection between this policy and their day-to-day roles? And so that's the next step for the PD subcommittee. And then the student diversity equity committee will focus on helping to train their peers on the policy at their respective schools. The 2019-2020 reframing the narrative cohort continues to engage in several professional learning activities as they work towards developing anti-racist curriculum. They actually have an upcoming workshop in early March with teaching tolerance, and we're partnering with teachers from Fairfax County, Madison County, and Charlottesville City Schools. This is another great opportunity. If you are interested, we would love to have you there, and I can share more of those details as we're currently in the process of finalizing them. And as mentioned earlier, we are looking to convene focus groups to examine our existing culture of hiring and retention of teachers of color. That's a collaboration between our human resources team and the equity specialists. And we will be exploring alternate measures for tracking incidents of reports of racism. We will be drafting our qualitative and quantitative metrics for each subcommittee. And our next update to you all will likely be in May or June. And so at this time, we would like to open it up to take any questions or remarks you may have. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share this important update.
Thank you very, very much. Comments? Questions?
I would encourage it to be May. I would just encourage it to be May. But thank you very much. You guys are rock stars.
Thank you so much for the update.
Just one question, I'm sorry. You almost made it out. The student advisory committee is a high school-level committee, and there are going to be some training with their colleagues, I guess, at the high school level. Is, well, you know what my question is, about what about our younger students over the next couple of years?
Well, the ideal is to begin with our high school leaders, because it's much easier to pull them together. We have a representative from each of the three high schools who were part of the eight students who developed the policy. So we're going to use their expertise, we're going to also use them, we're using them to recruit other student leaders in their schools. So we're going to build capacity through those groups of students, in addition to having the two interns that will be working directly out of the Office of Community Engagement to assist with building out this program.
Kate, your point is very well taken, and we'll certainly take that back to the student diversity equity committee to think about what we can be doing to engage our middle school leaders.
One comment is that, you know, lest there be any doubt in anybody's mind on this, the depth of this program, the depth of this project, the depth of being able, of trying to be able to and being able to eliminate racism in this county, is a long-term project because it's a matter of engaging everybody, you know, and that, whether it's within the school division or whether it's within the community, the outreach of this and the depth of the program, you know, is just astounding. And, you know, so if there's any doubt as to why this is taking a while to put together and to organize and to do logic models and to have a real strategy to go out over the next 10 years as a start, you know, it's just very impressive. So thank you both. Thank you all for what you do.
One last question for me. Is Mary also included? You mentioned three schools, but is Mary also included?
Actually, Jasmine is saying yes, yes.
Okay.
So a few months ago, we started meeting with a group of students at Mary High School who wanted to personalize the anti-racism policy to their school. And they worked with the diversity resource teacher in that school, and they had some momentum moving forward. But the leader of that group transferred to Alamoan High School, so we have to continue to try to keep them moving, but they are engaged.
Okay.
Yep, my question, thank you for creating this logic model. It's a helpful way to visualize something that's pretty complicated. I guess my question is, for the overarching outcomes, do we have that tied to concrete? Or these are concrete goals, do we have it tied to goals that then we can measure? So, you know, right now it says reduce disparity in AP and dual enrollment classes. Well, I mean, I don't know what timeline we're aiming for, and I don't know what amount.
Yeah, so that's a really great question. That is part of what the policy enforcement subcommittee will be working on this spring. We wanted to really spend time having each subcommittee start this planning process, and then the policy enforcement team is meeting, they've started meeting with each of the project managers to start thinking about metrics. What does that look like from a qualitative, quantitative perspective? Our plan is to create, it should, on the last row, you'll see a three-year evaluation plan, and part of that is to continue to share the metrics and the success of this program. And in conjunction with that report, we would be doing listening sessions so that we're sharing the report and having opportunities to debrief and discuss it with the community.
Any other questions or thoughts?
Thank you both so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jasmine. Thanks, Bernard.
Okay, next up is our other business by board members or superintendent. Dr. Haas, is there any other? Dr. Haas?
I'm sorry.
Is there any other business from the superintendent?
Oh, I have no further business, Mr. Alcarro. Thank you for asking.
Very good, thank you. Okay, let's first do the motion. Mr. Ober?
I move that the Alamoan County School Board uphold the superintendent's decision with respect to the complaint of discrimination brought by employee A pursuant to school board policy GB, subject to certain additional measures that the school board may direct the superintendent to implement in connection with this matter.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Ms. Johnson, do we have a real call?
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Althorn?
Yes.
Ms. Reber?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Alcarro? Yes. The motion passes, and we will continue down that path. Any other business that anybody has for tonight? Okay, with that, we are adjourned.